Good evening and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Kettering Planning Commission for Monday, January 23rd, 2023. The meeting will be televised as usual on Miami Valley Cable Council Cable Channel Six and streamed live over the Internet at mvcc.net. It will also be recorded and available for later viewing on mvcc.net. I would like to thank the Miami Valley Cable Council for televising and taping tonight's meeting. Since this meeting is both audio and videotaped to form a complete record for possible appeal to City Council and/or the courts, it is important that anyone who wishes to address the commission to come to the lectern, speak into the microphone, and give their name and address for the record. The Planning Commission is a volunteer independent body appointed by the council, whose mission is to hear all bodies involved and subsequently make a motion to approve, deny, continue, or recommend the application. All action by the commission can be appealed to the City Council. We're going to start with our old business, approval of minutes. Anyone have a motion to approve the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes of December 5th, 2022 meeting.
We have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and approved, approved the minutes of December 5th, 2022. Mrs. Gall, would you call the roll?
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Rathman?
Abstain.
And Mr. Waskey.
Yes. Second item on our agenda is appointment of officers for 2023. Mr. Rathman?
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair. I have a proposed slate of officers for the City of Kettering Planning Commission for 2023. For the chairperson, Ray Waskey. For vice chairperson, Don Rathman. Secretary, Carol Fisher. Assistant Secretary, Ken Lackey. And currently, the Planning Commission member is vacant, waiting to be appointed by City Council. That's the slate of officers.
Do we need a motion on that?
We should.
We should, okay, yes. So I'd like to have a motion to approve the slate of officers.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the slate of officers for 2023. Mrs. Gall, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
Mr. Rathman?
Yes.
And Mr. Waskey.
Yes. So we have before you, these are all the candidates up here, so I won't reintroduce them, but I would like to reintroduce members of city staff who are present. Right now is David Roller, city staff planning commissioner, I'm sorry, city planner, I should say, and Ryan Hoff.
Humsey.
Humsey, got it. And he's also a city planner. And I think that covers those bases right now. So moving on to new business, we have item number three on our agenda, zoning map amendment, planning case 22-024, amendment for 2025 and 2061 through 2061 East Dorothy Lane. Is it Mr. Humsey or, okay, Mr. Roller?
Thank you, Mr. Waskey. We have received an application asking for a recommendation to City Council regarding a zoning map amendment to rezon property located at 2025 through 2061 East Dorothy Lane. That property is located in front of the Kroger development there, near the intersection of Woodman and Dorothy. The property is located in between two fast food restaurants and is in front of the Applebee's Restaurant to the north. The current zoning district stipulates that the proposed changes to the existing development would necessitate review and approval under our former planned unit development ordinance. This is located in economic development overlay number 14. This ordinance is no longer in effect. We don't have a planned unit development ordinance anymore. So rezoning the property to a conventional zoning district would remove that problem and fix that defect. It would also allow for future development and future reuse. We did review the application in accordance with the City of Kettering zoning code, and we have included that review within your staff report and staff packets, I'm sorry, Planning Commission packets. Section 1153-126A has standards for zoning map amendments. There's, within that, there's two subsections, subsection A1 and subsection A2. A1 lists out five criteria that Planning Commission has to be able to make a certain finding in order to move the recommendation along. In the first criterion, we were able to make that finding. It says that the proposed amendment is consistent with the City of Kettering's comprehensive plan and with the intent of the zoning code, or such consistency is being sought concurrently. The land use plan, that's included in the staff report as attachment D, shows that the subject property is listed as subregional commercial. It's currently being used for that, but subregional commercial lists out retail, office, residential, and large-scale civic uses. So this was consistent with that. Similarly, the proposed amendment would extricate the property out of a now defunct zoning The EDOs are considered defunct, and the adoption of the newest zoning code took place in May of 2015. So the economic development overlay district is no longer in use and is no longer recognized by the current zoning code. So this finding can be made. So we go to subsection A2, and within A2, that states that a recommendation can't be made unless the site is either one acre or more in area, or it's adjacent to land use within the same district that it's being asked to be rezoned to. This is adjacent to B business districts, so it does meet that standard as well. Further on in that section, we have 1153-126B, and that is having to do with the report of the Planning Commission itself. This subsection specifies that the Planning Commission must consider certain matters or issues and be able to make findings on those in order to make a recommendation to City Council for rezoning. There are, I believe, five issues that are there, and then one following that, so a total of six. The first issue, the extent to which the proposed amendment and proposed use are in compliance with and deviate from adopted plans, goals, and policies. As we noted previously in the previous subsection A1, it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Issue two, the suitability of the property in question for the use is permitted under the proposed zoning. The proposed zoning district is B business. Currently, it's being used for uses that are permitted within the B business district. So there's not really any change. The B business district is analogous to the EDO 14 in this certain zone. Issue three, the adequacy of public facilities such as transportation, utilities, and other required public services to serve the proposed use. The site's fully developed. It's already being served by existing infrastructure that's already currently in place. Issue four, the effect of the rezoning on surrounding uses. We don't anticipate any tangible effects to the surrounding uses. The existing development would continue, and newly permitted uses are similar to those currently allowed in the economic development overlay. Issue five is similar to issue four, the effect of the proposed rezoning on the economic viability of existing development, I'm sorry, of existing developed and vacant land within the city. The proposed rezoning, again, imparts no tangible changes to the surrounding uses. The existing development would continue, and the newly permitted uses are similar to those of the current EDO. The final issue is that of sole interest, whether or not the proposed rezoning is in the sole interest of the applicant, or if it's also in the interest of the city at large. The city's goal with economic development overlay districts is to rezone them to one of our core conforming and recognized zoning districts, and that allows for the expedient, efficient, fair, and uniform application of the zoning code. We are prepared to offer a recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Roller. Before we go to the recommendations, does anyone on the Planning Commission have a question?
None.
I do not.
Nope. Mr. Roller, would you proceed with your recommendation?
Based on the evidence presented and the analysis and findings made within the staff report, staff recommends that the request for approval of a zoning map amendment for the property located at 2025 through 2061 East Dorothy Lane be forwarded to City Council with a recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Roller. This is a public hearing, and first of all, is the applicant here? Do they wish to address? Okay, they're not here, okay. Is anyone here in the audience wishing to address the commission on this matter? Okay, guess not. So since no one is coming forward, I'd like to have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Gall, would you call the roll to close the public hearing?
Mr. Rathman?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
Mr. Waskey?
Yes. And Mr. Rathman, I believe you have a motion?
I do. Mr. Chair, I have a motion for 2025 to 2061 East Dorothy Lane. It is a zoning map amendment, whereas an application has been received from Jeff Benson for 085 South State Route, 741, Lebanon, Ohio, requesting approval of a zoning map amendment, rezoning property located at 2025 to 2061 East Dorothy Lane from the EDO number 14 District to the B business zoning district. And whereas, the Planning Commission has reviewed the facts surrounding this request, including an oral and written report by city staff, which is incorporated herein and held a public hearing on January 23rd, 2023. And whereas, this request constitutes approval of a rezoning from the EDO number 14 zoning district to B business for property located at 2025 to 2061 East Dorothy Lane. And whereas, the Planning Commission adopts the findings of fact presented by staff in their staff report, which is incorporated into this motion, I move that the applicant's request for approval of a rezoning from the EDO number 14 zoning district to B business for the property located at 2025 to 2061 East Dorothy Lane be recommended to City Council for approval. This concludes my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Rathman. Do we have a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve this motion. Mrs. Gall, would you call the roll?
Mr. Rathman?
Yes.
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Waskey?
Yes. The fourth item on our agenda tonight is to replat a lot consolidation at 4435 Dogwood Trail, planning case number 22025. And we have Mr. Humsey.
Thank you, Chairman. This is a fairly straightforward request. It involves a portion, the northwest portion of NCR Country Club, where that driving range area was approved about a year and a half ago. It currently contains about four parcels. They want to consolidate those four lots into just a single parcel, and it'll make, it's made up of about 27 and a half acres of land. There's two different zoning districts, both of our residential estate districts, REA is the zoning designation for the property to the west, and then everything to the east of that is REB. Here's a map of the actual record plan, and just to kind of illustrate, here's the existing lot layout of that area, and here's what they're proposing to do, just consolidating those four parcels into a single lot. And we, staff reviewed it under both the zoning code and our subdivision standards. The only two standards you really have to look at for, in this case, for the zoning standards are minimum lot sizes and minimum lot frontages, and both of those standards would be met by the proposed record plan. And then we also review it based on our subdivision standards, and that's section 1117.03 of Kettering's codified ordinances, and those, the review of those standards are included as attachment C in the packet that went out, and all of those standards are met. There's a couple minor comments that staff had. There's some existing easements on the record, on the plat to the north that weren't included on the drawing, and then one of the street names was incorrectly labeled, and we pointed out that they need to fix that. And then finally, when the Mylar comes in, they need to make sure it's certified by the surveyor or engineer working on it, which is a pretty typical thing to come in with the Mylar. And those, Royal Ridgeway to the north is labeled as, I believe, Royal Way. They just need to correct that. And then there's a few easements in that same plat to the north that they need to show on the record plan, and all of those comments were included, went out to the applicant, and they're agreeable to all of them. And we are prepared to give a recommendation, but before I do that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Humsey?
None.
No. Yes, it looks like on the plat drawing, the signature block for the City of Kettering's got the year 2021, so if we can just get that updated to 2023, or unless we're good with just striking through and adding it in, but if they're making corrections...
We can have them type it on.
Mr. Rathman is notorious for catching these things.
It's great, that's...
It's on my checklist.
Important thing to check.
Any other questions? Okay, so do we need final recommendations?
Yes, did you need to add anything?
Oh, do we have, oh, I'm sorry.
If you don't have anything to add, it's okay.
Sure. Come down, please give us your name and address.
My name's Donald Kiley with KNA Architecture at 135 West Dorothy Lane. This has been a several-year process. I think the county has had a couple comments that were amenable to discuss with them, but if you look at, there's one easement that runs from Southern Boulevard across, kind of east to west, across there, right in there. It's a 12-foot wide easement right now. They would like to make that wider. That's really not part of what we're doing here with this replat. That would involve a tremendous amount more survey work, and we would want to, we're amenable to discussing that with them, but, you know, I think who pays for that survey work would be something we would want to discuss with them, because that's not really in the scope of what this replat is involved with. And also, they've even talked about some old easement possibly that they haven't been able to provide documentation for yet. That would not, this replat would not negate that easement if indeed it has been recorded somewhere, but they have yet to provide that information to our civil engineer, so just a little bit of background, a little back and forth that we've done with the county on that portion of the project. Be happy to answer any questions if you have one.
Mr. Humsey, does the city need to, is this a concern of the cities?
Well, whenever we get record plan applications, we send them out, because the county environmental services is a required signature block on record plans, and they often provide comments about easements and things of that nature. It's not really, they need to work that out with them. It's not really a concern of ours. We just look to make sure that it meets the zoning code, but it's very, I mean, we take care of, they take care of those comments as a part of the record plan when it comes in, because we can sign it, and then it still needs to be signed by county environmental services after that. So it's not uncommon for a condition to involve easements that relate to, but they're always really general conditions, like work with the county to finalize that. An example I can think of recently was the, on Canterbury, there was a record plan approved that consolidated some properties, and there were some old easements around that that they had to sort out. They actually had to work with AES Ohio as well as the county, and it, they have to work, the county has all that, all the documentation of those old easements, and they need to work with them to find out what the county will be amenable to.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure that's not a hiccup.
I mean, from, from the standpoint of the meeting tonight, it shouldn't be. They just need to continue working with the county.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Oh, Mrs. Fisher.
And I guess this is for Mr. Humsey. So when we get the final Mylar, will that have the issue of the easements on it or taken care of?
It should be.
Okay.
I mean, it should be, because the county is a signatory on the plat before it's recorded, so if it's not, if it's not taken care of, then they won't sign it, I believe. I mean, I don't work with the county, so I can't speak for them. But yeah, generally, we would check to make, we would kind of do a high-level check to make sure it meets those requirements. And it's not uncommon for a plat to be approved by the Planning Commission, and then for me to be included on like a chain email between the engineer and the county on finalizing easements. That happens quite a bit, just to keep us in the loop, and then the Mylar, they work it out, and the Mylar comes in, and the county's happy with it, and then we sign it, and then it goes to the county next.
I think what we need right now is the city to approve it, because that's, the city's requested this to happen, so once that approval occurs, then we can push back against the county. I mean, virtually, that's a 12-foot wide easement that goes across the parking lot. That was probably several, it's probably 50 years old, and they're wanting it to be much wider, more than twice that width. Well, that's, involves, you know, that's a taking of NCR's land, and there needs to be a negotiation for what those terms should be for them to want to do that. This isn't the vehicle, this replat wasn't the vehicle for that to occur. They should have approached us else, some other time and discussed that. So once this is approved, then we can sit down and talk to them about whether or not we want to do that and what that will look like without regard to this project. Hopefully that...
Okay. I just wanted to be sure that the city wasn't putting itself in a position of whatever, liability or whatever.
It's not uncommon for old easements, the 12, I think 12-foot might have been the standard several decades ago. Now I think it's 20 feet. It's a pretty common comment from the, for the environmental services to provide. However, they work that out amongst themselves is separate from the zoning review.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? No. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. So, Mrs. Fisher, I believe you have a motion?
I do. I have the motion for NCR Country Club replat, whereas an application has been received from Michael Novine, agent of the owner of 4435 Dogwood Trail, Kettering, Ohio, 45429, requesting approval of a record plan that would replat four existing lots into a single lot containing 27.550 acres. And whereas, this request constitutes approval of a final record plan for the newly described lots, and whereas, the Planning Commission has reviewed the fracs surrounding this request, including an oral and written report by city staff, which is incorporated herein. I move that the applicant's request for approval of a final record plan for the NCR Country Club record plan be approved with the following conditions, which must be met prior to the provision of the Planning Commission's signatures. One, that the plat drawing be sealed by the surveyor. Two, the location, dimensions, and purpose of the existing and requested easements be shown on the final Mylar. And three, the comments provided as a part of the engineering and utility review be addressed. I move for approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve this motion. Mrs. Fisher, would you take the roll, please?
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Rathman?
Yes.
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
Mr. Waskey?
Yes, I believe I misspoke. I meant to say Mrs. Gall. Thank you. All right, the fifth item on our agenda is a replat and consolidation, lot consolidation of 3535 Southern Boulevard, planning case 22-026.
Thanks again, Chairman. This is a somewhat similar request to the last one, where they just want to consolidate a lot, except it's much bigger. It involves a big chunk of the Kettering Health Network campus over on Southern Boulevard, and it's kind of hard to see there, but the red outlines depict the areas that would be covered by this record plan, and the yellow lines within those red boundaries depict the existing parcel lines. And when, in looking at that, you can see, I believe, there's a total of 13 parcels that are in that area now, and they want to consolidate them into four, and the total area will be about 106 acres that are affected by this record plan. The existing zoning for all of the areas covered by the record plan, except for kind of that northwest portion, which is the property that contains the old fire station, is zoned institutional, which, and then the fire station is zoned residential estate B. And here's the actual record plan, kind of hard to see there, but those are the existing lot lines, and what they want to do is consolidate them into four total parcels. You will notice the old fire station will be on its own lot, and it would meet the dimensional requirements of that zoning district. And like the last record plan, staff reviewed this in accordance with the zoning code and our subdivision standards. The standards that we had to review for the zoning code deal with minimum lot size and minimum lot frontages, and also minimum setbacks. In all cases, this proposed record plan would not create any nonconformities associated with any of those standards. And then the subdivision standards within section 1117.03 of Kettering's codified ordinances, the review of which was included as attachment C in the packet that went out. The record plan meets all of those requirements, except the following. Similar to the last case, there are a few surrounding easements that aren't included on the record plan. We asked them to include those. There are a few names toward the east of adjoining unplatted land, where they have to provide us the property owners' names, and we actually just got an updated record plan that provides those names. And then they need to certify the record plan when the Mylar comes in. And again, here's the only, the only real city comment deals with including the names of those owners kind of on the eastern side there, and we've, they've already done that with an updated record plan that we got a little bit ago. So staff is prepared to provide a recommendation, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Humsey?
No.
Don?
Just because it's my thing, the Kettering Planning Commission approval blocks got 2022 for the signature date. It's a new year.
We'll get that corrected. Thank you.
Any other questions? Can you point out to me, I've forgotten where Fire Station 7 used to be? Oh, I see, Don's pointed it to me, okay.
Lot number three.
I knew it was back up that way somewhere, okay. But that's not part of this.
No, it is.
It is?
Yeah.
Trying to look it up.
Right now, there's a, there's like a panhandle parcel right here where the fire station's up front.
There it is, yep.
And now they're going to put the fire station on a separate parcel and then consolidate the rest of that eastern portion with the lot to the south. So right now, it's like this, and now it'll be like this.
Okay. And let's see, did we do final recommendations yet?
I did not yet, but I'm prepared to provide that.
Can we have your recommendations?
Did, did you guys want to add anything?
Unless they have questions.
We have a few representatives here, if you had any questions.
Did you want to bring anything to our attention? Here's your chance.
After you answer questions, if you have any questions.
Do you have any questions for the applicant?
No.
No.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Chairman. So the recommendation included in the report is that the Planning Commission motion to approve the record plan, case number PC-22-026, with the following conditions, which must be met prior to the provision of Planning Commission's signatures. Number one, the plat drawing be sealed by the surveyor. Number two, the location, dimensions, and purpose of existing and requested easements be shown on the final Mylar, and the comments provided by the other reviewers be addressed.
Thank you, Mr. Humsey. With that, let's see, Mr. Lackey, I think you have a motion.
I do. Have a motion for approval, Kettering Medical Center, Section 3 Record Plan, whereas an application has been received from Michael Novine of Burkhart Engineering Company, agent of the owner at 3535 Southern Boulevard, Kettering, Ohio, 45429, requesting approval of a record plan that would plat 13 existing parcels into four lots containing 106.191 acres, and whereas, this request constitutes approval of a final record plan for the newly described lots, and whereas, the Planning Commission has reviewed the facts surrounding this request, including an oral and written report by city staff, which is incorporated herein. I move that the applicant's request for approval of a final record plan for Kettering Medical Center, Section 3, be approved with the following conditions, which must be met prior to the provision of Planning which must be met prior to the provision of Planning Commission's signatures. The plat drawing be sealed by the surveyor. The location, dimensions, and purpose of existing and requested easements be shown on the final Mylar. And three, the comments provided by other reviewers be addressed.
Thank you, Mr. Lackey. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve this motion. Mrs. Gahl, would you call it, please?
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Rathman?
Yes.
Mr. Waskey?
Yes. Moving on to item number six, we have another replat and lot consolidation. This one is at 1461 Old Lane Road, planning case 23-002.
Thank you, Mr. Waskey. We have received an application from McDougal Marsh Land Surveyors requesting a lot consolidation for the property located at 1461 Old Lane Avenue. This is near Hills and Dales Park in the Hills and Dales subdivision. Well, I'm sorry, it's actually not technically in that subdivision, but it's in that vicinity. It is actually located in the Glen Beck Edition. That's the name of the plat that it's in. And they're requesting approval of a replat of Lot 23, Lot 22, and part of Lot 21 into a single new lot. That's a little bit more than half an acre, 0.5535 acres. We did review it for compliance against the criteria found within the City of Kettering subdivision ordinance. We found that it met all of the criteria. And we don't have any conditions that we noticed or flagged on the criteria checklist. We found that everything was correct. And even just now, while the other cases were going on, I checked the dates on the signature block. And this one's good. So we didn't miss that one.
Right.
We are prepared to offer a recommendation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have a question for Mr. Roller?
I have none.
I don't have anything.
Okay. None seen, Mr. Roller. May we have your recommendations?
It's a long one, so be prepared. Staff recommends approval.
That's it?
That's it.
Well, that was easy. See, I see no one in the audience, so I guess we'll move on to, I'm sorry? Oh, we still have to...
Make the motion.
Oh, I know, yeah. So Mrs. Fisher, you have a motion?
Yes, I do. The Silco plat, lot consolidation. Whereas an application has been received from Thomas K. Marsh, McDougal Marsh Land Surveyors, 8529 Byers Road, Miami'sburg, Ohio, requesting approval of a replat of Lot 23, Lot 22, and part of Lot 21 of the Glen Beck Edition located at 1461 Old Lane Avenue into a single new 0.5535 acre lot. And whereas this request constitutes approval of a final record plan for the newly described lot. And whereas the Planning Commission has reviewed the facts surrounding this request, including an oral and written report by city staff, which is incorporated herein, I move that the applicant's request for approval of a final record plan for Silco plat be approved.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Do we have a second? Are we going to arm wrestle on who has the second?
I'll put Mr. Lackey down.
Yeah, second.
Okay, Mr. Lackey got that one. So, okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve this. Mrs. Gahl, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
Mr. Rathman?
Yes.
Mr. Waskey?
Yes. That concludes all of our new business. Audience participation, if anyone's in the audience that wishes to bring something forward to the Planning Commission that was not on tonight's agenda, please come forward to the podium. Give us your name and address. Seeing none, we'll move on to other business. Mr. Roller or Mr. Homsy?
We do have a plat for Planning Commission signature this evening. It's for the old Imperial Car Wash site. So we do have that ready for signature.
Thank you. Communications and reports?
We do not have any at this time.
And finally, Planning Commission comments. None?
No.
Why? Slow night. Okay, well, with that, our next regularly scheduled meeting, I believe, is going to be scheduled, tentatively scheduled for Monday, February 7th at 7:00 PM. Is it 6th? Oh, I wrote the 7th. Let me do a quick calendar check. Mr. Rathman's on it. That's the 6th. Okay, I stand corrected. November 6th. At 7:00 PM. This meeting is adjourned, and the time is, I think it's, I can't quite read the clock from here. 7:39, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rathman.